Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Kankakee Planning Board Meeting, September 16, 2025. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Here.
Chip Warren? Barry McCracken?
Here.
Arthur Lex? Jose Arturo Barajas?
Here.
Steve Case?
Here.
Beverly Hood, present. We have a quorum. Thank you. And we have the August 19, 2025 minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Are there any corrections, changes, or additions?
So moved.
Second.
Let me see who's second.
What's that?
Was that you?
Me.
Okay. So we have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions, comments about the minutes, changes, additions? Roll call. Jose Arturo Barajas?
Here.
Steve, just a yea or nay? Yes. Yes?
Yes.
Did he say here? Oh, he said. Oh, sorry. Steve Case?
Uh, yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes. Communications.
Okay, so we're still waiting on fire engineering on QuickTrip, which seems to be taking forever. The MAP amendment that we had last meeting at 205 North Fairmont and the conditional use for the auto repair was approved at City Council on September 2nd. The conditional use permit for a shelter care facility at 970 East Court Street was denied at City Council last night, September 15, 2025. There was a MAP amendment for the property located at 1076 East Maple Street from R1 to R2 that was approved at City Council September 2nd. Conditional use permit to operate a gaming cafe at 604 North Entrance Avenue was approved at City Council September 2nd, 2025. And we had a text amendment regarding, I think it was shelter care facilities in industrial zoning districts that will go to City Council on October 6th. I don't have any signals.
Okay. New business, case PB 2025-9-1, a public hearing for a major variance from the minimum lot area standards for certain real property commonly known as 441 West Hawkins Street, Kankakee, Illinois, 60901. The subject property presently bears the PIN 16-17-06-416-015 in the fourth ward. Would the applicant for this case please come forward?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Hang on.
And if you could speak into the mic, if you could please raise your white hand and state your full name for the record?
Dustin Coy.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, if you could tell us about your case?
Seeking conditional use permit, or actually for 441 West Hawkins, we're requesting a major variance from the minimum lot area to be able to rebuild if something were to happen. As you can see, the property is being used as a short-term rental now. We've completely remodeled it.
If I could ask you to speak up just a little bit in the mic, please?
Yeah, if you see the photos, too, we've completely remodeled the property. We're actually just using it as a short-term rental right now. We didn't discover the minimum lot size until we went to refinance the property.
Commissioners, any questions?
So Deb Terrell here. Basically, you discovered that it didn't meet the minimum lot area standards, and this is a problem because...
Yeah, because if something were to happen to the property, we wouldn't be able to rebuild the property to today's standards. And we didn't discover that until we were refinancing the property. So we'd like to, if we had a major loss on the property, we would like to be able to rebuild it.
So you can't refinance until this is...
That is correct.
Okay.
Barry McCracken, Dustin, I got a question for you about the parking. Where do people park now?
It's all street parking there. So it's a side street. There's never a driveway there. It was all mainly yard. Yeah, so there's no dedicated parking for that house.
You said there is no dedicated parking?
No, there is not.
There was not when you purchased it?
No.
Is that going to require another variance?
For the, so for this variance, it does not. For this variance, it is just about the lot area, and because the property is already occupied, the parking code is, has a different requirement than the non-conforming code section that talks about non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures. The parking ordinance basically says that if you intensify the use by adding additional dwelling units or by adding an addition, by increasing square footage like of a commercial property would be a good example of that, then those intensifications require parking compliance, like a hard parking compliance. But if, even in this case, the property is not non-conforming as to use because it's currently zoned R1, it's not, there's not a zoning issue here. It's just a bulk regulation issue that really affects the structure itself and rebuild related to that if there was serious damage to it.
So the street parking is...
It's not. Although I feel like there's a, I have the short-term rental. I'll have to look it up real quick and see if there's any requirement in there. That's different than this, than this variance request, though.
And your intent is for it to be an Airbnb?
Yes, and we currently have a rental license for it, on it.
But it's operating as an Airbnb now?
Yes, correct.
How long has it been?
We launched it earlier this month.
I mean, I'll just say, it's just a little unclear, I think, Deb, because there's requirements for short-term rental licensing, and it basically just says that there, if you're going to provide one in a commercial building located in downtown, that no additional parking is required. And if you're going to do an accessory short-term rental, that no additional parking is required above and beyond what's currently required on the lot. But it doesn't say it has to come into compliance, and it doesn't say if you're doing an Airbnb for a principal structure.
Okay. So would you deal with what we're dealing with?
Yeah, I think so. And maybe we need to, I mean, these are the kind of things that end up on my list that maybe we need to address. And you know, I refer to them as unintended consequences. You just don't know all the things sometimes that you might, that might come up until they come up. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Sure.
Any other questions? The public hearing is opened at this time. If anyone wants to speak for or against this case, you may come, so come forward, or if you have any questions regarding this case, you may come forward at this time.
I swear to tell the truth. Lance Marzak, Alderman, Fourth Ward. Just in regard to the parking, I know that street really well, and there, there's not a shortage of on-street parking. There's actually an abundance. But, you know, it's always been a house like that, very small and never an issue. But, you know, I did have one call today regarding what was going on there, and she was satisfied. She's just to the east of there on Fourth, but she, she just wanted to know what was happening. And I told her it was allowing them to rebuild if it burns down. So it was just, you know, basically the new setbacks would not be allowed, you know, to rebuild if this was a change, but she was satisfied with that.
Do the neighbors have to be notified if that's going to be used as an Airbnb?
Yes, sorry, I just put it away. They do have to be notified. It says, "Prior to starting short-term rental business, the property owner shall send out written notice to the owners of all immediately abutting properties of the subject lot. Written notice has to include business license number, contact information for the owner of the short-term rental, and a copy of the notice provided to the city planner."
Okay, so that was done, and we haven't heard from anyone? Just...
Oh, that's for the short-term rental, like the license that I just read. But he did have to send out letters for the variance, and those were sent, and I did not receive any public comment.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, when we were there this evening looking at it, there were no cars parked in front on either side of the street, and it did appear that there was plenty of on-street parking available.
Seeing that there were no audience speakers who want to speak for, I guess this case, the public hearing is closed?
Didn't we do this for another one of your properties a couple years ago?
I believe so. I can't recall.
River Street, was it?
I believe so.
How did that work out?
Worked out fine.
I think what you will be doing will be an enhancement.
Thank you.
And you have a pretty good track record.
Thank you.
Well, Madam Chairman, I'm ready to move.
Okay.
In case PB 2025-9-1, the request for a major variance from the minimum lot standards for the property at 441 West Hawkins, I would like to move that we approve this request. And I would like to attach the findings as outlined by the planning department.
If you wouldn't mind reading those, we're being asked to add those in for the report.
Okay. The variance relates to a specific parcel of land and is due to some unique circumstance, and the unique circumstance in this case would be the inability to rebuild the property in case of a devastating loss. The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in that zone. I think the issue here is that he wouldn't be able to refinance, and that that would definitely be not conducive to a reasonable return. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not alter the essential character of the area, and that is true. The benefits of the variance substantially outweigh any detriment. And the variance would not substantially impair the intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan as adopted by the corporate authorities. The zoning ordinance is set to achieve the following goals: promoting and protecting public health, safety, comfort, morals, and general welfare; securing adequate natural light, pure air, and safety from fire or other dangers; conserving the taxable value of the land; and generally enhancing the aesthetic values throughout the city. Based on these goals, this variance would not impair the purpose of the city's zoning ordinance. And for further recommendations, the planning department is requiring that the City of Kankakee Fire Department and the County Health Department and the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement should be satisfied that all of their requirements are met prior to the commencement of occupancy. The applicant shall obtain the required permits and comply with all provisions of the zoning ordinance and the building code of the City of Kankakee, and the applicant shall obtain and maintain any applicable rental housing licenses with the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement Office.
Thank you. We have a motion by Deb Terrell.
Second.
Second by Jose Arturo Barajas. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Steve Case?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes. The variance is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. In the case PB 2025-9-2, a public hearing for a conditional use permit for dwellings above ground floor for certain real property commonly known as 909 North Fifth Avenue Commercial and 917 North Fifth Avenue Residential Units, Kankakee, Illinois, 60901. The subject property presently bears the pins 16-09-31-208-008 and 16-09-31-208-010 in the fifth ward. And you may speak.
Okay. Yeah, so we've got 909 North Fifth Ave. here. We're seeking a conditional use permit for the pre-existing second-floor apartments and a major variance for the minimum floor per dwelling. One of the units is 610 square feet, the other one's 410 square feet. From what I can tell, they've always been there. I'm not saying they were done with permitting, but they've always been there. We purchased the property maybe two months ago. Our intent with the property is to rehab interior and the exterior. We want to keep the two apartments as is, the layout you can find on the second page there on the second floor. We want to do a commercial on the first floor and keep the two apartments upstairs. So that's pretty much our plan.
Is that former shoe place attached to that building?
I think, it's M&amp;W Accounting Building. It's attached to Vince Clark's old space.
It's a separate parcel.
A separate parcel.
A separate parcel. Yeah, you can see it on the, well, on the aerial behind you. Mm-hmm. It is attached, though. I think it is attached.
It is. It shares a wall right next to each other.
Mm-hmm.
And we already got plans to start remodeling immediately. We just wanted to get through this first.
So that smaller unit would be a studio?
Yeah, actually, I believe, if you look at it, the larger studio, the larger square footage is actually the studio.
Yep.
The smaller square footage is the one bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
I have similar apartments on West Avenue between 400 and 600 square feet, and their one bedrooms are studios, and we have no issues leasing them at all.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is Steve Case. Just a question for us. So it looks like, in our information, the variance is actually not needed. Is that correct?
I scoured the code and was not able to find any minimum floor area for C2 second-floor residential units. I think it was, I think when those edits were made, I think kind of throughout the districts, it was just, my guess is it was intended, Steve, to have a regulation because that same, like, there's like, I don't have it with me, but there's in the, not the table, but in the district regulations themselves, there's like a list of, you know, accessory units or what's in the table and blah, blah, blah. There's a list. And there now, Mike had added in there second-floor residential units, but there's like four bullet points that they have to meet. And it's in C1, and it's in C3, but it's not listed in C2. And then the table has second-story units allowed in C1, C2, but also prohibited in C3, even though they're allowed in the actual narrative part. So I think, I am going to bring forward a text amendment. I'm going to take it to ordinance committee next week that clarifies all this stuff. So, and I would assume, I mean, we can have this conversation now or later, but I believe that C1 and C3 are both a minimum 600 square feet is what the district regulation is. So I would assume that we would follow suit, and that C2 would also be a minimum 600 square feet.
Okay.
But currently, Steve, you are correct, there is no regulation in that district for that, although in the table, it does allow for conditional use to be applied for. So you can apply for it, and there is no minimum size. But I just thought it was important to show you guys what the square footage was. Yeah, but no, no action is needed at this point.
So if we recommend the conditional use permit for the, the second-floor apartments, and then later, you know, establish a minimum square footage in the code, these would be considered legal non-conforming?
Potentially, I guess. You could, we could, we could call out their square footage if you wanted to in this conditional use, and then as long as this conditional, as long as they don't get, as long as they're not vacated. I guess, let me just back up. I think that the two units, as is, if they do not change, and they're granted a conditional use permit, that conditional use permit will ride with those two units and make them legal regardless of their size, because the ordinance will grant those two units upstairs, as long as they don't change, as long as somebody doesn't come in and want to remodel and make them into 500 and 500. I know that sounds really silly, but one of them will be increasing, one will be reducing, and then you would be tripping the zoning ordinance. So I guess it will be fine. You don't have to add a condition because that ordinance will make those legal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. Do you have a gas, like gas and two meters and the gas and electricity, or?
Yeah, actually, it's already set up for separate electric meters.
Yeah, there's three, right? I saw three.
Yeah, there's one gas meter, but we're, through the renovations, we're going to convert the apartments upstairs to electric only, and then downstairs will have electric and gas.
Nice.
Public hearing is open. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak for or against this case or have questions, you may do so at this time. May come to the mic. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Did you say we're going to remodel the outside, too?
Yeah, so we actually got, already have plans for it. I believe the permit's been issued for the roof. So we're replacing the roof, actually with a metal roof, and then we're replacing all the siding, all the windows, so everything will be remodeled. We're going to try to keep some of the original character, that cedar angled siding. We're going to replace that most likely with a metal wood-looking siding to kind of keep that original character. But yeah, that's pretty much our plan.
Okay.
Say, are we ready to act?
I'm ready. So in case PB 2025-9-2, I make a motion that we recommend approval, we recommend the conditional use permit for dwellings above ground floor for certain real property commonly known as 909 North Fifth Avenue Commercial and 917 North Fifth Avenue Residential Units, and that we attach the findings and subject to the following recommendations: that all requirements of the City of Kankakee Fire Department, Kankakee County Health Department, and the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement Division be satisfied prior to commencement of the business operation and/or the occupancy of the residential units. The applicant shall obtain the required permits and comply with all provisions of the zoning ordinance and building code of the City of Kankakee. The applicant shall obtain and maintain rental housing licenses with the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement Office, and the establishment of one existing parking stall as an ADA-compliant accessible stall prior to occupancy of the subject building.
Thank you. We have a motion by Steve Case.
Second.
Second by Barry McCracken. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes. The conditional use permit is recommended for approval, and this will go to October 6, City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case, PB 2025-9-3, a public hearing for a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales and service used for certain real property located at 382 North Skylar, Kankakee, Illinois, 60901. The subject property presently bears the PIN 16-09-32-411-018 and 16-09-32-411-003, first ward. And the applicant is before us. If you could raise... If you could raise your right hand, state your full name for the record.
Sam Shalabi.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could tell us about your case.
I'm trying to get a special use permit for used car sales and to improve the building, move the... My fence back, make customer parking, remodel the front of the building, remodel the fenced area, make it look more presentable. And that's it.
Tell us about some of the specific plans that you have, such as the painting, the fence, landscaping.
I'm going to reface the front of the building, the side of the building towards the bus station. It's all like peeling. It's white paint that's peeling. Going to repaint it. We do it in front of the building. Our front fence is a chain-link fence. We're going to move it back, I believe it's like 27 feet, wherein we're going to put a six-foot inch steel iron fence to make it look more... Instead of the chain fence. And have customer parking, instead of customer parking on the street, they'll have... They could pull in, park inside, so it's more safer for them when they're pulling in and pulling out.
Okay. And the landscaping?
In the landscaping, it's already grassed there, and then along the fence between the neighbor and I, I sent pictures showing that their trees actually grew in between my fence, so it's like hard to tear it down. I would have to cut down all the trees. And they're not my trees, they're the neighbor's trees. But I'm going to reface the whole lot. It's right now, it's all weeds and gravel. I'm going to repave it. We're going to line it up for customer parking, handicap parking, and line it up for where the used car sales will be.
Okay. And tell us about the sales part of it.
It's going to be for used car sales, affordable used car sales, just for community. And then with auto repair, we have auto repair right now, and we have a good clientele with auto repair, and like we help a lot of senior citizens. They call us, their vehicles at home. We get... We go to their house, pick them up, pick up the car, bring it, fix it for them, and take it back to their house.
Okay. And your inventory consists of?
The inventory consists of where we're going to park it.
How many cars or vehicles do you look at?
Twenty twenty-five cars.
Twenty twenty-five?
Right. It's going to be parked on the north side of the lot, and then on the south side of the lot. It's going to be open, a path for customers to drive through the lot, so they can get out through the alley, or they could go out through the front.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
What kind of security lighting do you have there currently for all the cars that are there now?
We have the spotlights out on the side of the building that light up.
Do they have, like, a curtain so that the light stays on the lot, or do they reflect into the neighbor's property?
No, it's actually pointed downward, so it lights up towards the ground, and there's all security cameras out there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. And you're going to repave that area?
Correct. And it's going to repave through the back, because by the alley, it's all gravel to the garage doors. We're going to repave it all up. So the gravel and the weeds will all go away.
Okay.
Tell us about the additional cars that sit behind in the back.
Along the fence?
No, there were several white vehicles, trucks.
Those are the previous owners, and I requested several times for them to remove them. I gave them to the end of the month to remove them. After they don't remove them, I'm going to call like the impound, have them come impound them.
They don't have any license plates on them, most of them, so...
Those aren't mine. They're the previous owners' cars.
Those are his.
Yeah, and I requested from him several times to come remove them, and I gave them to... I gave them to the end of this month. If he doesn't, I am going to get an impound company to come impound them all, and I'll pay... I'm going to pay the expenses for it.
Any other questions? Public hearing is open. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward, speak for or against or have questions regarding this case, you may do so at this time. You can come forward, please. If you raise your right hand and state your name for the record.
Sasha Resnichenko.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, go ahead.
As being a single mom in this community for about the last 10 years, I have worked with, in the professional level, but also at the consumer level, with multiple other of the small used car dealerships. And what Mr. Shalabi is trying to do with this lot and trying to turn it into would benefit our community so much more, because it would be an all-inclusive. We would have one stop, one place to go, warranties, things that other lots are not offering. None of that is offered down here. And people like me and others in our community that need that kind of stuff, need responsible people and help, and people that are there that are going to actually stick to their word when it comes to maintenance or maintaining anything, especially with our vehicles, is very important to us. Having a one-year warranty on anything comes usually at a cost. But a lot of the other shops around here, whether it be the small ones on... In Kankakee itself, in city, or even Bradley Bourbonay, a lot of them do not offer what Mr. Shalabi is trying to do.
Thank you. Anyone else may come forward? You can state your name for the record.
Brian J. Hausma.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Yes, I just want to state that this guy, like I work for him. So a lot of the things that they said that he provided for the community, like he has a referral program, so we have a lot of customers, they come, repeat it. So when they do come and they refer us, refer the shop to another individual, he gives them a discount, and not only that, he's trying to provide a service for the elderly in the community for very light work, like oil changes, check fuses, light work, you know what I mean? But it's provided free to him. So I just wanted to state that. And he gave me a job again, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Someone else? Raise your right hand and state your full name for the record.
Edward S. Brown.
You swear the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I've worked with Mr. Shalabi.
If you could speak up in the mic, please.
I've been here for about two years now. I came here through Garden of Prayer Youth Services. I know we've been through here a couple times, and the service he provides, he's actually... I've been to quite a few garages here. The standard. He has the better standard. He's providing for the community. That building that's across from there, you... That area needs a little bit of pickup. You picking it up. He's providing jobs for locals. He didn't go out and pick us from somewhere else. We work from here, you know? And it's a pretty good... He's been a pretty good guy, as far as I can say.
Thank you. Okay.
So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? You have someone else. State your full name for the record.
My name is Velma Brown.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth.
All right, go ahead.
I know a lot of people that work for him, and it's a good place. It's a good shop, and I hate to see another business closed in the city of Kankakee. He helped the young men and women in the Kankakee, in the city of Kankakee, with jobs. And I talked to Sherri Malone, and I was hoping she would be here today, but she's not able to, because she's met him as well, and she know how hard it is to keep businesses open, and she doesn't want to see another business close in the first ward, no more than I do. I don't live in the first ward, I just know a lot of people that work for him. And again, I hate to see it closes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Final remarks?
Nope.
No? Okay, public hearing is closed. If there's no one else who wants to speak. Commissioners?
I have a question for Mr. Shalabi. So just the recommendations that have been attached, just wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with all of those and had seen all of those, not parking vehicles in the public right of way or outside the designated parking areas, especially important, because you've got the bike lane right there.
Yeah, that's why I'm going to move the fence back that's on the side of the street right now. I'm moving it back about almost 30 feet to make customer parking in the lot.
Yeah, I think that'll be much better.
Yeah.
Replacing the existing section of existing chain-link fence, providing six-foot privacy fence along the north property line.
That's the only issue I have, is because the trees are... Grew... There's pictures in there. You can see the tree grew in to the fence.
So would we recommend, in that case, would we recommend plantings? In... How... What would the best way to address that?
That would be very difficult because of all the tree roots.
Have you talked to the property owner on that side about those trees?
The renters, the owner, I have never seen them.
Okay. The other question I had about the recommendations was... Sorry, I just lost it. "All nonconforming signage must be removed from the property slash building." Do we have a sense at this point of whether there is any nonconforming signage?
I think he's taken it down.
I did take it down.
I talked with him last week about it. There was a lot of signage on the fencing, actually, like I think maybe three signs, and there were some additional signs on the wall that he did take down, yeah.
But you haven't installed that yet, right?
The signage for the wall?
That you... What's that in your hand?
These are the pictures of the front of the building, the signage is all.
Yeah.
If you guys want to see that.
And then I have pictures of the signage for the front of the building.
For the new sign? Yeah, you should let them see it, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. So it sounds like with the exception of that north... That north fence?
Right.
I'm sorry. So it sounds like with the exception of that north fence, you're comfortable with all of these recommendations? Okay.
Similarly, I would be very opposed to not replacing that fence on the north property line, because when you have an incompatible use with a resident right next to a used car lot, it does require a buffer, and that buffer can be a solid wall, it can be a hedge, it can be 30 feet of space, you know? There's a lot of options in our landscape ordinance, but I can see the conundrum here. And having dealt with trees that grow up through chain-link fences, I know how difficult that can be. That being said...
I know it's been an auto repair shop for numerous years with the same, and...
Yeah.
The whole site always filled with cars. So and I... I asked them, there's never complaints from the neighbors about it.
Mm-hmm. You haven't talked to your neighbors about...
Yeah, I did. They're customers of mine.
Okay.
And to clarify, I mean, the signs went up, the notices went out, the neighbors were notified, and if the property owners were concerned, they would have had the opportunity to...
I... Sam, I also, if you want to talk about your... I know you and I had some conversations about the painting as well, and I just want to make sure that everybody here, since we're talking about the improvements, understand.
Charcoal.
No, it's okay. But I think sometimes it can be shocking if it's not, you know... And I do think we're talking about improvements on the whole site and allowing you to expand and intensify your use. So I think that you had intended to paint the building, yeah?
Charcoal.
Charcoal.
You're going to do it charcoal?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the... Initially, it was a little brighter. And the chain-link fence also in the back?
It can be black.
Or if it stays, it'll be painted charcoal gray as well?
Yes, the one in the back will be charcoal gray, the front will be the black.
And then your signage, your new signage, is it going to be the green?
Yes.
You have that?
There's green there now, and it looks so... Looks okay.
Will this one also go on the other side of the building as well?
Yes, we got it. There'll be pictures for all three sides. So I should leave it for you.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
So we had a... Do we have a motion on this yet? No? No? Any other questions? Like, someone would like to entertain a motion?
Steve, did you have any further questions?
Sure. What?
You didn't have any more questions?
I didn't have any more questions, no. I... If I would make the motion, I would omit recommendation number six.
I think that's fair, given the circumstances, since there hasn't been... You know, the property owner was notified, and if they or the renters had any issue, we would know about it. So I think it's fair. It doesn't please me, but given the circumstances...
Have you seen it?
Because not the only thing I could see that you could possibly do there is take away the pavement out a couple feet from the fence and plant a hedge or something there, but you're going to run into such terrible roots. I'm a landscaper formerly, and I know how these things work.
Right.
I don't see any way that you could plant in that spot.
Mm-mm.
The only thing that you could do, and even erecting a fence, putting in the fence posts and everything, those trees were spaced so closely, and they're so huge, that they're lifting the pavement. They're a real impediment, so I'm inclined to waive that requirement, too.
All right, so if we can get a motion for this case?
I will make a motion on case PB 2025-9-3 for a request for a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales and service used for certain real property located at 382 North Skyler, Kankakee. I make a motion that we recommend approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the attached findings, and with the following recommendations, that all requirements of the City of Kankakee Fire Department, Kankakee County Health Department, and the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement Division shall be satisfied prior to commencement of the business operation. The applicant operator shall obtain the required permits and comply with all provisions of the zoning ordinance and building code of the City of Kankakee. The applicant operator shall contact the ECDA offices of the City of Kankakee to add the business service to their existing business license prior to commencement of the business operations. The applicant operator shall not park vehicles in the public right of way or outside the designated parking areas, and especially not in the bike lanes. The applicant operator or owner shall replace the section of existing chain-link fence that faces North Skyler Avenue with a six-foot open iron fence. The applicant operator shall provide landscaping as approved by the planning department along the north and west property lines adjacent to the customer parking area, as indicated on the concept plan. The applicant operator shall procure sign permits for proposed signage, and that all nonconforming signage must be removed from the property and building, and that all applicable conditions of the project shall be complied with prior to commencement of business operations.
Thank you. Second. We have a motion by Steve Case and a second by Deb Terrell. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Steve Case.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Motion passes. The conditional use permit is recommended for approval. It will go to the October 6 city council meeting. Thank you.
Good luck.
Next case, PB 2025-9-4, a public hearing for a MAP amendment to... MAP amendment to rezone 357 and 363 East Hickory Street, 357, 371, and 361. A public hearing for a map amendment to, map amendment to rezone 357 and 363 East Hickory Street, 357, 371, and 377 South Indiana Avenue, and 421 and 429 South Dearborn Avenue from commercial to residential zoning, second ward. Applicants, City of Kankakee.
So this one is relatively small amount of parcels. I had received two calls, inquiries about property. One from an existing property owner looking to sell that was in the middle of a sale, one that was doing some appraisal work. And in fact, I actually got a, a third call today, oddly enough, and it was just from a, an appraiser, which I don't know, I don't, I don't always dig into why they're calling or why they're doing appraisal. Sometimes it's for sales, sometimes it's refinance, it could be for any number of reasons. And they were actually calling today about 363 East Hickory. So they're also now monitoring this rezoning as well. So Mike and I both have done rezonings in this area, but just didn't grab these properties for whatever reason. They are all zone C3, they're right on the, kind of the perimeter of the downtown area. They have all been existing single-family homes for a very, very, very long time. There's some of our older housing as well. There is kind of a variety, the, the properties that are along South Dearborn are both existing single-family homes. And so those I'm recommending for R1T. The properties that are along Hickory and Indiana, the two kind of in the middle of the little subject area on Indiana are both existing single-family homes. But there are three properties that have multifamily. The property at 2, 357 East Hickory is an existing three unit, and the property at 363 Hickory is an existing four unit. And the property at, I can hardly go here. And the property at 357 South Indiana is also an existing three, three unit. That property at 357 South Indiana doesn't currently have existing rental housing licensing, but there's a history of rental housing licensing there. But I do still, I think that we've not always dug in that deep with these rezonings to determine that, and we do sometimes. But of course, that's up to the planning board. If you did not want to rezone that one to multifamily, I would probably just say do R1, but, or R1T. But I think it's, it's perfectly fine. When we do these, just as a reminder, these don't deal with any kind of parking requirements or any lot sizing. So if there are rebuild issues for these property owners and something happens to these properties, they do have to come back in front of us in order to get those variances. And we would be considering any parking regulations to kind of reoccupy those buildings if those, ever, if they ever lost status or the properties were destroyed, or the buildings were destroyed. That's all I have.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and open up public hearing in case there's someone in the audience who wants to speak for or against or have questions for this ca, on this case. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
It seems administrative to me, and I'm ready to move.
Okay.
In case PB 2025-9-4, the request for a map amendment to rezone 357 and 363 East Hickory, 357, 371, and 377 South Indiana, and 421 and 429 South Dearborn from commercial to residential zoning. I would like to propose that we recommend approval. And that we attach the findings for the planning department.
Second.
Motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions, comments? Roll call. Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes. This will be on the October 6th City Council agenda. All right, next case. PB 2025-8-4. A public hearing for one, a major variance to reduce the required setback for a shed from five feet to six inches. And secondly, a major variance to increase the allowable square footage of a shed from 150 square feet to 216 square feet for certain real property commonly known as 1147 South Poplar Avenue, Kankakee, Illinois, 60901. And the applicants are already before me. Both of you going to be speaking? Okay, if you could raise your right hand and state your full name for the record.
Nick Goodman.
And if, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, you may tell us about your case, and if you could speak into the mic, we have a recorder off-site recording.
We were trying to do a variance of a, to enlarge in the size of the square footage allowable. And then we were also trying to do a variance of the property line for a shed.
Can you talk a little bit about your construction, the materials that you're planning to use?
Oh, we're trying to keep it somewhat to the neighborhood there, so the shed itself will have actual copper put back on it. We were planning on using like a commercial standing seam roof on it with wood building material that would kind of blend into the neighborhood.
Nick, just a question. You, you're talking about copper, is it going to have gutters, or?
Yes, it'll have gutters for drainage, and then some of the access points on it will be copper to kind of blend back into our property and some of around it.
Okay, yeah, real nice.
So we have one communication from Austin.
I have one question. You guys are going to live there, or are you thinking about renting, or?
No, it's actually our, our current property that we live in.
Nice, okay, thank you.
Yes, I didn't receive any public comment from the notices, but they did submit a letter of support from the property owner directly to the south, which would, the setback reduction impacts that property directly. That person's shed also is very close to the property line, if you can see that on the aerial as well, so. But they're kind of like staggered.
Yeah, they're staggered. They're not going to be, the two buildings right against each other, right?
No.
Nick, was there previously a shed or a garage on that property?
The garage is connected to the house. As far as I know, there's never been a shed on it.
This is also like a double lot that was consolidated at some point in time as well.
I have no doubt that it's going to be beautiful because, quite frankly, your house is jaw-dropping. Have you done that work yourself?
Yes, we have.
It's just beautiful.
Any other questions?
This is just a clarification question from Melissa. So if it is a double lot, does that change the allowances for the size of sheds?
It does not.
Okay.
I wish it did. That's for me in another meeting, Steve. I have lots of comments about accessory structure regulations in the City of Kankakee. I just, I would just say this out loud, because we have a regulation even for a patio, that it's like the maximum size patio you can have is 200 square feet, which is pretty small. And all of our, like, buildable coverage type numbers are based on buildable area of the lot, which is very complicated. I mean, I, I run it on a formula in Excel, but I'm not sure it was ever checked prior to me coming here. Mike didn't have a checklist, and I'm not sure how much of that made it to him. The, and for the public, it's complicated, right? And I, it's not how it's normally done, so, like, best practice, and I can tell you, Bradley Bogdanite, they have a flat, they have a flat percentage of lot, right? And then if there's an additional one in accessory structures, it's usually just, some communities have one for the whole lot, like a, like a master impervious number. And then there's an allowable percentage for accessory structures, just based on, on a percentage of lot typically. Some communities do have a maximum number, like a garage max, they don't want anything bigger than this generally. I don't mind that. I, the, the smaller things, like pools, patios, those bother me, decks, because I feel like, I guess I just don't understand why we would care so much. Like, if we give a person an allowable amount of impervious area on their property, they prefer to have a larger patio instead of a patio and a deck, or a patio and a pool, because maybe they don't swim. But somebody else wants a bigger pool, I, I don't see why we would want to carve that up. And it's just, it's not very typical of communities anyways, so I would, it's just something I think we should address. I feel like they don't come here because the economies of scale and the time, the homeowners don't want to come to the planning board to pay and spend the time to do that. They would rather comply. So they oftentimes are just reducing the size by significance sometimes. And I don't, I just don't think it really makes sense, so, for another day.
I think in this case, if the neighbor to your south didn't already have a shed on your property line, I would be much less comfortable with, with building a shed, you know, that close, six inches. We're looking at a, a variance from five feet to six inches. Even if your current neighbor is comfortable with that, you know, if, if they move out, the people that, that buy the house, you know, to the south of you are, are now going to have, but whoever buys that house already is going to own a shed on their property that's directly on your property line. So the fact that there's already a shed there on the property line does make me.
It's a garage, isn't it?
A garage, okay. You're, okay, thank you. That's even more permanent, that's probably not going.
Oh, yeah.
That makes me more comfortable with allowing the variance for the six.
Yeah, I think the thing that made me more comfortable too is that they're staggered. They're not going to be right-butted up against each other.
All right.
I have another question. I'm trying to figure, is that like a 10 by 10 foot, or?
It'd be a 12 by 18.
Okay, I'm not good on.
Sure.
But thank you. No, it looks very nice. I like it, I mean, the property.
So is that a shed for garden equipment and household items?
So Nick, why, why did you want to put it six inches off rather than like a foot and a half off or something like that?
More or less just because of future plans for the rest of the yard. It kind of limits us if we offset it there just because we don't have a lot, because our driveway goes all the way back. And the, like a lot of the other houses, the driveway's at the back to the alley. So our alley side is limited, plus we didn't kind of want the, really the dead zone just to kind of collect different things. Because regardless, one way or another, we would have a fence there that was previously there, or we'd have a shed wall, and then by the fence we wanted to use to significantly reduce the cost for us to, to use the shed walls as part of the fence walls.
Okay.
So the shed will be tied into the fence? Is that, is that what?
We, we would, well, we'd stop it at it, but yes, correct.
One more question. Your foundation will be concrete?
It's, it's currently a six-inch concrete pad right now, already poured.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Move it, move it a foot away from that.
Public hearing is open. If there's anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against or have questions, you may come forward. Raise your right hand, state your full name for the record.
Matthew Patton.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right.
I think this question might have been answered, but I couldn't quite make it out. What was the, the intended use of it? Was it just for household or was it for business storage? Okay.
If you could speak into the mic, I thought it was being recorded.
I, I was asking for clarification as to what the usage was, whether it was for household or for business storage. And I was asking because I live across the street. I'm at 1150 Poplar. And I don't know if this is the right form for it, but, but you frequently park your, your, your business vehicles on the street. I was hoping that this would mean that they would be moved off the street. Is it, limits parking for when I have friends over, things like that, and just a bit of an eyesore. So I would be much more encouraged to, to do so if it was for business storage, but I'm a little worried that it might actually work the opposite and that, that some of the business storage might end up more on the street. And I, I just, I'm asking that question.
And if you're speaking, and you do speak into the mic?
I apologize. I want to.
The response would be in the mic as well.
Sure.
So you're asking him a question, so if you could come forward and, and respond in the mic again. And state your name so the recorder knows who's speaking.
Nick Goodman.
Okay.
Actually, we, we obtained a commercial property to park our trucks and stuff at. So there's some that are out there sometimes, just because a lot of our employees actually live very close. So it's a kind of an easy point for them. If you notice, they're not always there, and there's been a lot less. The commercial vehicles, we stopped parking there just because the city itself really didn't like it. So really now, it's just almost that truck. I know right now that box truck has been there a little bit too, but it's because of some of the construction going inside, because we're doing a full inside remodel as well right now.
Do you have any, another comment or anything? If so, if you need to speak in the mic, please.
I think that covers it.
Okay, thank you. Only once, twice. Public hearing is closed. Any other questions, comments, commissioners?
Does this need two separate motions?
Yes, yes, there's two, two different variants.
In that case, I'm ready to make a motion on the first major variance, on case PB 2025-8-4. I'd make a motion that we approve the request for a major variance to reduce the required setback for a shed from five feet to six inches for certain real property commonly known as 1147 South Poplar Avenue in Kankakee. That we attach the findings and also subject the following condition, that the applicant shall obtain the required permits and comply with all provisions of the zoning ordinance and building code of the City of Kankakee.
We got a motion by Steve Case.
I second.
A second by Jose Barajas. Any questions? Roll call. Barry McCracken? Deb Terrell? Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The variances are granted.
That's number one. We have a second one.
Oh, the variant, I'm sorry, the variance is granted.
We have a second one.
You're making me work hard tonight. All right. On case PB 2025-8-4, I make a motion that we approve the request for a major variance to increase the allowable square footage of a shed from 150 square feet to 216 square feet for the real property commonly known as 1147 South Poplar Avenue. And again, that it is subject to the condition of obtaining the required permits and complying with all provisions of the zoning ordinance and building code of the City of Kankakee.
I second.
We have a motion by Steve Case and a second by Jose Barajas. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Barry McCracken?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Deb Tyrrell?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes, the variance is granted. Case PB twenty twenty five dash eight dash five, a public hearing for a major variance for the industrial paving requirements to allow for the use of heated, heat-treated asphalt grindings for certain real property at the northwest corner of Stanford Drive and Grinnell Road, Kankakee, Illinois, six zero nine zero one, Seventh Ward. Will the applicant please come forward? And please raise your right hand and state your full name for the record.
Matthew Neblock.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could state your case, please.
Um, me and my wife own a trucking company. It's called Norton Trucking. We're a few, uh, few properties adjacent to this property, um, on Stanford Drive there. It was Jim Deluzak's old trucking company that was there. Um, we're a growing company. We employ over ninety people, um, drivers, uh, office staff, mechanics. Um, we run out of our building there. We're a growing company. Uh, we purchased a lot a few years ago, uh, for overflow trailers and trucks and things that, uh, we've had on the lot, uh, for the last few years. Um, in the last, you know, six, eight months, um, they said that I wasn't able to park on the grass there anymore, so they're asking me to, um, change it to a hardened surface. Um, and I really don't have any other room or anything else to buy that's adjacent to me. Um, so that's why we would like to change it, uh, so that we can make a parking lot there. Um, we're going to park our trucks, we're going to park overflow trucks and overflow trailers there. Uh, I mean, I guess that's about it.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
Just a quick question, so it sounds like the the variance is specifically for how, what you want to use to pave it. Uh, can you explain a little bit about that as opposed to, I guess, asphalt or concrete?
Um, we're going to use heat-treated asphalt grindings that they took off of Route fifty seven up towards Mantino. Um, I've seen a lot of other people, uh, in Kankakee and other places use this, um, as a hardened surface. Uh, obviously, we would probably take out twelve to fifteen inches of soil that's there, um, and and put this in. Um, ground, the ground that's there, when I bought the ground, um, was actually used for a dump site, uh, from the Route fifty seven, uh, bridge there several, several years ago. Um, so I I would tell you that, uh, we're going to clean it up. It hasn't been used for anything in a lot of years, um, other than overflow parking that, uh, Harry All was using. Um, so we'd like to use the grindings instead of incurring a ton of cost and putting, you know, asphalt or concrete in.
So when you say you're going to clean it up, what does that mean?
I mean, it was just overgrown weeds, um, and that stuff before. I mean, there's some mountains of, uh, I would say rock and dirt that's already there. Um, so they asked me, you know, to put bushes in that stuff all the way around the property and it's it's just going to be a decent looking parking lot.
And you're familiar with best practices for using asphalt grindings?
Oh, but the gentleman I I'm, I'm hiring to do it, you know, has done this a lot and, yeah, he knows how to use it.
What does that entail?
I I guess I'm not, I guess I don't understand your question.
Asphalt grindings are carcinogenic and the dust has to be treated in a specific manner legally by the EPA. Um, when you're transferring it, it has to be wet and covered to prevent dust. When it's laid down, it has to be sprayed with water to prevent the dust. Anybody who is working in the area or anybody in adjacent areas is susceptible to this dust, so it isn't just the safety of the workers that's involved, but people on adjacent properties as well. Uh, and then once it is laid down, it has to be sealed in a specific manner to keep that dust and particles from coming up into the air. And I'm just wondering, that's kind of expensive. Um, have you talked to them about that?
I did not talk to them about it, but the gentleman that that is doing it has done several, several parking lots, um, and, you know, I'm buying the material from him and he's doing the whole job.
Who is it that you've hired?
Ron O'Connor from Clean Cut.
We, we've had two cases, uh, where we have approved the use of those grindings to pave areas and both of them have been problematic because they have not used best practices in handling the material, they have not sealed or coated the finished product, and they laid it too thick. There are thickness requirements as well, and I believe for commercial areas like parking, it's six inches. And you're talking about twelve to eighteen inches?
You have to have a base. I mean, it it depends on on what you're parking on the, on the ground. I mean, if you put six inches and and you set a loaded semi trailer there, um, it's six inches is nothing, it goes right to the ground.
He's not wrong. Sorry.
It's loaded?
He's not wrong. I mean, you're going to have to have a heavier base, a bigger base.
Right, but the base is supposed to be something other than the asphalt grindings.
Yeah, and and he may put different base in there. I don't, I I can't tell you how that he's going to do it. Um, I just know that this is what he's going to use to to use on the top coat. I mean, I I don't, I don't know, I don't know if he's going to put one inch stone or two inch stone. I I mean, I really don't know, uh, what he's going to do, but I know for the top coat of what you guys are asking, I'm asking to put the grindings on the top.
I will say, Deb, that I I think that for base, I mean, I do think that grindings are used for base. They use it even, like, even IGOT uses it. They have their own requirements for how contractors have to store it and use it on the site for road projects, but they do use it for base work for for roads. Um, I don't know what the, but I I've seen the regulations, like I went and checked it out just to make sure that I, you know, I mean, just to become familiar with it. Um, I don't think we have a code that says that you can't use that as an aggregate as part of a base. I don't, I'd have to check and see.
No, I I don't recall that we did. The specific problem with the one over by the Ace Hardware Store on Skylar in Kankakee was that it was so tall that it became a flooding issue for the hardware store, for the house in front of it, and there was a leak actually that formed there.
Well, that's, that has to do with 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 height. That had, I mean, you you could pour the concrete too tall and it could make a, a difference.
Right, exactly, but that's what I'm saying is that you won't be increasing, that you won't be contributing to a drainage problem.
The height is going to be the same, I mean, or or whatever it needs to be for that lot.
So he, and I don't know if Ace, did, was Ace, um, a brand new parking lot or was it a, it was an existing area? Did they go through site plan review? Do you know?
They did, but there was no follow-up.
Okay, so we've just been talking about this, uh, internally, just so you know, we we do not currently have, um, a process in place when the building permits, um, after they're pulled, he'll go through site plan approval, pull the permits, they'll do the work, right? Um, and there'll be engineering plans for the grades. He's already engaged with, um, MG two A, correct? They're going to do, they're going to do that work. Then actually, I think there's even going to be, there's be detention, a small detention area, right? I think is proposed on there. So they are going to have to address all of that and there will be proposed grades. Um, what we've been talking about internally is that we are probably going to need to outsource to Piggish as part of inspection work during permitting where there's exterior site work. Um, we currently have not been doing that, Deb, I would just tell you right now. And I didn't even really notice that happening until there was a few permits, a project that I had been working on that went through construction and we got to the back end where I was asking, um, for Asbills, which we're doing now. Um, we were not, we were requiring them, but not getting them on the back end. But now we're getting them and realizing that there are some issues happening during construction, which is not abnormal for stuff to happen. Um, but the the thing that's annoying is when you don't catch it at pre-pour, right? When there's concrete getting poured and you don't catch it at pre-pour, when the forums, the layout's different than what's on the plans and whatever. Um, and I think the same thing with, um, any height differences. Neil is now, he has been reviewing Asbills, there's only been a few, but he's reviewing them before we're granting full occupancy. Um, now, in in Matt's case, it would be full sign-off on this. Um, he will likely be, I don't know if there'll be any right-of-way work, but we may have a small, uh, like bond or something being held on if if there's any right, there will be like right-of-way connections for this, so that work will have to be covered under some kind of guarantee. Um, and typically what we're doing right now is those get held. So if you don't have a building to hold occupancy until all that's signed off, the bond gets held until it's all finished. And that's, that's best practice.
That's.
All I can say is that we're, that's what we're striving for.
Yeah.
And I'm trying, we're trying to work on on fixing those procedural issues, so just I think we are likely going to.
So that just leaves a question of the dust and how that's handled with the wet application.
I mean, I'll have to, I'll have to inquire with the contractor of how he's going to haul it and set it down and those types of things. But you you say that there was a couple projects that were problematic, but I'll tell you the the Kankakee tank wash and the Ryan family just used grindings on their whole parking lot and they made a beautiful, I mean, improved that whole entire area out there. I mean, that, that, that looks great. And I mean, they, they, I mean, I have, I have an acre and a half lot. I mean, it's, it's twenty-two parking spots. It's, it's just going to help me a tiny bit until I can figure out what I can do next.
Okay. Okay. So I trust that you will speak to him about the dust?
Yes, I will.
Any other questions? I'll open up public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak for, against, or have questions regarding this case, you may come forward. Seeing done, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, are you ready to act? Case PB twenty twenty five eight five, a request for a major variance from the industrial paving requirements to allow for the use of heat-treated asphalt grindings for the property at Stanford Drive and Grinnell Road, Northwest Corner. Um, I would like to make a motion that we approve this request with the understanding that although it complies with the standards that we use to evaluate such variances, that the, uh, the requesting party, that we're in agreement with the requesting party, that there will be specific attention paid to controlling the dust during the project and after it's laid for safety concerns, because we can't satisfy every one of the findings if there's a substantial detriment to the public good and the health and welfare of the surrounding people. So your agreement that that will be considered and taken care of will satisfy that finding.
Yes.
And if you could add the recommendations? Uh, yeah, the specific recommendations attached are that all requirements of the city of Kankakee Fire Department, the Health Department and the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement Division shall be satisfied prior to commencement of the business operation. The applicant shall obtain the required permits and comply with all provisions of the zoning ordinance and the building code of the city of Kankakee and that the RAP asphalt grindings be heat-treated and final inspection shall be approved by the city engineer. I have a motion by Deb Tyrrell?
Second.
Second by Jose Arturo Barajas. Any questions, comments, concerns? Roll call.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Deb Tyrrell?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes, that variance is granted. Can I, can we do another motion to do a recommendation for the subdivision, I mean, the, uh, stormwater ordinance? No, it's subdivision ordinance, because this has, that has to go to city council.
What, what are you referring to, Melissa?
There's, so there's a regulation in the zoning code and it's mirrored in the subdivision ordinance and the variances in the subdivision ordinance have to be granted by city council, not by planning board.
Really?
Yeah, this was handled, Mike did the same thing. I just, I mean, it's, but it's both, it's in both ordinances. In fact, the subdivision ordinance can, doesn't even have to really come here.
Okay, so we make the motion to recommend to city council. Okay, we can do that. Uh, Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that in case PB twenty twenty five eight five, the request for a major variance from the industrial paving requirements to allow for the use of heat-treated asphalt grindings for the real property at Northwest Corner of Stanford and Grinnell Roads in Kankakee, um, that we recommend approval of this major variance with the, uh, previously mentioned findings and recommendations and the understanding that the asphalt grindings will be, uh, transferred with water sprayed when they're put down and sealed to prevent carcinogenic dust.
I second again.
Okay, we have a motion by Deb Tyrrell and a second by Jose Arturo Barajas. Any questions, comments?
This is, again, just clarification, this is, uh, recommending variance of the subdivision ordinance? Okay.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Deb Tyrrell?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes, it's recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Is there any other business? No other business?
I feel like I have something, my brain is like, um, oh, um, I'm so sorry. I'm looking at you because it's like the the other thing that I'm taking to ordinance. It actually doesn't, um, it's not in the zoning ordinance, in the, in the stormwater ordinance, um, but we, uh, had been getting some pushback on a very small project that has a, actually, you, it's, um, legacy banquet facility, it's very old. Approval, it's been extended a few times. Um, it's a very small parking lot, it's like four thousand square feet and it's, um, kind of expensive. She's got detention and it's, um, being handled inside, I think, the existing stormwater pipes, like increasing the size. So the cost of construction obviously goes up pretty, pretty high with that requirement. Um, and she had sought a, a variance, um, but Neil and I aren't super excited about granting stormwater variance like that, um, especially when we've held everybody else to the same requirements, um, many, many, many people. Um, and so it was brought actually to my attention from MG two A, who is their design engineer, that, um, out, because I don't review detention or stormwater or stuff that goes to Neil's office, um, that the city, um, has like a zero threshold, right? If you add any new impervious, you have to do storm calc's and B and Ps and D and detention. Um, and our neighboring communities, Bradley Bourbon A and also the county, have a ten thousand square foot threshold. Um, and so I've had some conversations with, uh, the mayor as well as, um, just like in our development review, uh, as well as Neil, and I think that we would prefer that if we're going to have the leniency, also make ourselves at least equal to, you know what I mean, our adjacent communities as far as development is concerned, um, that we should allow for all and that we should just look at changing. at changing the code. So we're, MG2A, as well as Neil, both have recommended, they like Bourbonet's regulations, the way they're worded, the way they're spelled out. So I have not dug into this yet, but I had, next week, I'll have to start looking at this because we're going to, I'm going to take at least the discussion topic to ordinance committee to start the discussion so that we can get this moving. But it may end up here, just because sometimes ordinance committee wants to see what planning has to say. So I just wanted to share with you that that is also going to be coming up as a text amendment as well. That's all, that's all I have.
Okay. No other business? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a first and a second. First by Deb Terrell, second by Barry McCracken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
You're voting for...
Arturo.